Yes, but it's not a big deal because some people don't sign up, so you'll lose people for that.
They have two here.
No, I was telling them where the phone was.
Why did you have somebody call me to be with you today when you got my number?
You're a new pound of...
Wait, see, you...
I don't have your name. Do you know if the mayor's gonna let you?
Well, you were getting too excited over there and say, "Oh."
But you're done.
I know, but you called me, you called me.
Okay, I'll...
Yeah.
I think...
The board, the board is becoming, being the I S P, but we're proceeding at that speed on Sunday.
You're gonna join us? Either women or men. Oh, that's right, that's right. All right.
Yeah, because, you know, if somebody else is like, you know, you need to know that, you know, where that somebody, um, what happened? How come this started? This is just...
What's the word?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Courtesy, man.
I know, I know.
Forget about anything else, courtesy.
Right, right.
So I'm gonna get to it.
Okay.
Yes, I've got to stay out of the way, stay tight.
He's rushing off.
But I think it's gonna come back.
I think it's not long enough.
Can you take her off? Okay, great, great. Oh, yeah, turn mine off also. So Rita's not gonna... No, she's not. Turn your phones off. Put them on bad. No, we're good, ready. And it's ready. Yep.
The purpose in stopping here?
Good, are you... I know, I know. I feel that for you sometimes, I used to... Um, you can, if you wanna give him some meal, catch him, and then once you...
Yeah, I'm wonderful.
Yeah, you know what, you know, it'd be easier, when you come up, just hand him the meal. Then press. You know Ramona LaRoe? Yeah. You know Ramona LaRoe? No. Ramona LaRoe? Ramona LaRoe? Ramona LaRoe? Yes. Okay, do that, do that, that's fine. All right, thank you, okay. March 20th. I mean, I hear if you want to... Fun, okay.
All the headphones?
Yeah. Yeah, I wish. Can I hit my voice on, I don't want...
Ladies and gentlemen?
I know when they come, I'm late.
When there's less than ten items, that's when you call?
Yes.
I just had to try to do something, all right?
Everything good?
It's so good, it's...
Hi. Oh, Vicki, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Diane?
Oh, yeah, especially sitting next to you. No, no, obviously there's some things. There's, just, listen, if anybody tells you that they don't like some things about it, they're not being...
Oh, come on, it's like your regular job, if there's something you like or something you don't like.
You know what, thank you. If I was to say, "I'm outta here, I can't wait, I'm counting the days," that's not right.
Oh, I know, that's not true.
Yeah, and when you see me, I have fun with it, these last couple of years, I've really been loose. I mean, I never used to push to get this thing over with, fun. It's been, like, fun, I'm like... I've been out so I ruined this before the commission...
Ladies and gentlemen, like to call to order the regular city commission meeting for tonight, January, excuse me, February 5th, 2019, at seven o'clock, please have roll call.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Here.
Mayor Gans.
Here. Before we do the moment of silence, if everyone could please keep in their thoughts, a moment of silence for Zamora Permenter, sophomore student at Deerfield Beach High School. She was killed in a car accident on I-95 and Tenth Street in the morning in January 28th. And also, we lost Peaches Johnson Harper, one of our longtime city employees at our Center for Active Age, and if we could all keep in our thoughts, please.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have acknowledgement of the city board meeting minutes for our code compliance meeting minutes for July 25th, 2018, community appearance board meeting minutes for December 12th, 2018, our education advisory board meeting minutes for October 3rd, 2018, and November 7th, 2018.
Like to make a motion to acknowledge those minutes, just describe.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We also have approval of our city commission agendas, well, as the two addendums, A-1 and A-2.
Like to make a motion that we accept the agenda with A-1 and A-2 included.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. First up, we have our former state representative, Ms. Wendell A. Clark-Reed.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city commissioners, attorney, and clerk. This evening, I'm here to present a flag from the state of Florida. As you know, speaking with you at the MLK event, I noticed that we only had an American flag over at Ovita McKeethen Recreational Complex. So tonight, I'm here to make it balanced with a state flag of Florida. As you know, this flag is a part, the design of the flag was adopted in 1900, that, at the Constitutional Convention of 1868, directed the legislature to adopt a state flag bearing the seal of a specific dimension and design. And this flag's dimensions and design is in the Constitution of the state of Florida. Tonight, mayor, members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, my sorority that I'm a member of, who also are involved with the Senior Citizen Center here in Deerfield, we're here tonight to make this presentation to you, and we would like to see this flag at Ovita McKeethen Recreational Center. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you so much. Appreciate you, Doc.
(applause) Now I'm gonna mess it up with this. Yeah, we don't want that making that weird.
Looks like your jacket went to the wash.
It was a dark red, you can remove that jacket. You're right, it's our best hack. Thank you, you're so welcome. If I just have a moment, a personal privilege, this Saturday, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, at the Ovita McKeethen Recreational Center, the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated will be holding a workshop for young men. So I'd just like to let Deerfield know that we are doing that, and I encourage all of the young men, the churches that have young men's groups, that you bring your young men over, it's free, and there is also lunch provided. That's from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at Ovita McKeethen Recreational Complex. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we are also honored here to have our new county commissioner, Lamar Fisher.
Good evening, mayor and vice mayor and commissioners, and I am so honored to be here tonight, just to say welcome, and to be able to be part of the Deerfield team. I have been privileged, over the many years, served as mayor at Pablo Beach, to be able to work with each and every one of you, as one of our sister cities, as we border each other, but now it's the opportunity for me to represent the county level. And I'm so excited, and the mayor knows, we have hit the ground running with some exciting opportunities to be able to partner together. So the key to this relationship is truly working together, and I want you to know that I am your voice, and I will continue to be your voice. Coming from my municipal hat to my county hat, I know what you deal with every day, and so I wanna be used as much as I can, and reach out to me, and I look forward to a long-lasting relationship, and I will see you, I believe, on Pioneer Day, to be a part of that, and I was honored to be with the mayor at the MLK parade, so thank you for your kindness and your generosity to me, as I serve in this position. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you so much, commissioner. I would like the commission to know that, you know, Commissioner Fisher has started a mayor's roundtable, which we're gonna meet quarterly, to talk about the issues for northeast, really cover northeast Broward County, and I think it's gonna be a wealth of information, and it's good to team up, and I really appreciate your efforts on it, so thank you very much. Next, we have our quasi-judicial public hearings.
Quasi-judicial item, item two, and two A will be tabled until February 19th, 2019, as part of the approval of the agenda for the public information. Item number one is quasi-judicial matter, is anyone gonna testify on item number one? Would you please stand and raise your right hand if you're going off the testimony, if you saw a quid testimony. I'd like to give you the truth, I hope you've nothing but the truth to help you, God. Thank you. Item number, after item number one, would you please step forward?
I recognize this gentleman.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you for seeing us tonight. We're here on the presentation of the Chase South parcel, associated with the master development plans, associated with the 1801 West Sample Road project. As you all know, it's directly across the street from the Costco on Sample Road, it's a project that...
Would you be, sir, if you wished to waive the quasi-judicial proceeding, or would you like a more formal quasi-judicial proceeding? It's up to you.
I think we should waive them.
Are you waiving?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, my name is Robert Sherman, the development consultant for the owners of 1801 West Sample Road. Okay, I'm here today with Brian Herbert, with Gallo Architectural Firm, that has worked on the project.
I'm sorry, do you mind speaking into the mic, just wanna make sure it picked up?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, that's okay.
I'm here also with Brian Herbert, who is the architect of record for the project with Gallo Herbert Architects.
Thank you. Bye.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, my name's Brian Herbert, Gallo Herbert Architects, 1311 Newport Center Drive. Project before you, as Mr. Sherman mentioned, is 1801 West Sample. It is the old government building that was, that's located across from Costco. The building was originally developed under the Broward County zoning code, and was developed back in, like, the 80s. It's been vacant for probably over 15 years, has fallen, had fallen into disrepair, had a number of code violations on it, when this developer purchased it. The code violations were resolved, the building itself was, is under construction for renovation that had a full facade on it. If any of you have been out that way, the building's coming along very well, nice, modern design. What's before you tonight is the out parcel, that's in front of that, it's a Chase Bank building, it's just over 3,000 square feet, and is being developed under the City of Deerfields code, which is more stringent, has more landscaping, meets the parking code requirements, so forth. We've been through your planning and zoning board, received unanimous approval, we've been also through your community appearance board, back in December, and had received unanimous approval. We have boards of the project here, and it's also, presentation's also on the PowerPoint, if you'd like to go through it, I'd be happy to answer any questions, so forth.
Okay, thank you. Any commission comments before we open to the public? Commissioner Parnas?
My understanding that no part of the lake will be questioned.
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't see any other questions, for at this moment, we're gonna open it up to the public, and even for the public here to comment on this item? Name and address for the record, please.
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. The way I read this, the background history states in part, a difference of 1,316 square feet is the result of the original site plan calculating all areas under roofs, such as covered entryways and foyer. These areas cannot be attributed to any specific use, and has therefore been removed from the overall calculation. So I'm not sure if they're removing the actual structures, but as I understand it, the covered areas are considered an impervious area, and therefore, the stormwater fee should be calculated on all covered areas. Considering the 1,316 square, uh, square feet equates to nearly a half EIU, then shouldn't it remain for calculation purposes in regard to stormwater fees?
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Not seen anybody come forward, we're gonna close it to the public. Commission comments? Commissioner Drosky?
Pardon me, it's part of our backup material, item 14 indicates that cost recovery fees will be payable to the city prior to being scheduled for, to city commission, has that been done? Question mark?
Thank you, I'm sorry. Yeah, cost recovery fees, we did have cost recovery fees for this project for traffic, and they were paid.
Are there any other, are there any outstanding staff comments at this time? I didn't see any others in the report, I just wanna make sure.
There are no, there are no outstanding staff comments for this project.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and just to address the issue, when it comes, I believe there will be a recalculation for, when it comes to stormwater, is that correct?
So, the, the actual footprint of the existing building is not changing. What the, there's, there's two items, there's a brand-new building, a Chase Bank, that item will receive all impact fees, police and fire, park, including stormwater, that, that's, that's a new building. The reference to the calculation of square footage is, because this was a county zone building, the way they calculated their parking and their use, they actually included the interior, there's a, an interior courtyard area of this building, that, you know, used for multipurpose areas, that isn't actually attributed to any particular area, it's just public space, so we don't count that in our code, related to parking. So that's the difference, that's the reason why there's a discrepancy in the, in the, in the square footage for the existing building.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Yes.
Mayor Gans.
Yes. Thank you, and we'll forgive you for parking in the city attorney's parking lot, pardon my face. This time.
Next is item three, an ordinance to the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending chapter two, administrative, administration, article two, boards, committees, commissions, division thirteen, Deerfield Beach Education Advisory Board, section two dash two oh seven, powers and duties to authorize the education advisory board to review students, scholar, athletes of the month applications, and recommend nominees to the commission.
Any commission comments before I open to the public? This is the second reading, Commissioner Drosky?
I had mentioned at the previous meeting, about incorporating just-not-student athletes as part of this, that we expand this program as much as possible, so I understand that there's an upcoming education advisory board meeting tomorrow night, so if we can let them know that, you know, the commission, or at least this commissioner, would like to see that program expanded, and bring future ordinances before us, I'd like to see that. I don't have any problems with this, but I would like to see it expanded.
I agree with that wholeheartedly. Any other, city manager?
Yes, quickly, Mayor Gans, Commissioner Drosky, yes, the staff liaison, this placid the card, she is aware of that, and she will be in attendance tomorrow night, so make sure it's discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone for the public here to comment on this item? Not seen anyone coming forward, we're gonna close it to the public. Commission?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have, we have a motion and a second, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Yes.
Mayor Gans.
Yes. And it's, when it comes to disclosures, just for public record, we're the ones that put that in place, that didn't exist previously, so that's one of the reasons why it's in the backup, it's part of the ethics code that was put in place several years back, I believe, when Commissioner Miller and I were sitting up here, when that was added as well. Next item?
Item six, an ordinance to the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, amending chapter sixty-six, traffic and vehicles, article six, wave vehicle limits of the city code of ordinance by creating section sixty-six, it has two six oh, cost recovery for damage to tubular delineators on city streets, roadways, highways, or rights of way. Authorizing the city to recover any cost for damage to tubular delineators, authorizing the city to provide signage indicating such minimum cost, providing for cause of destruction, durability, conflict, and ineffective data.
Did we miss five?
We, we are on five, we said...
Oh, no, we did, well, you guys did miss it, I did. No, I missed five. An ordinance to the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, amending section fourteen dash one oh five, exterior building and structure standards of the city code of ordinance is to provide regulations regarding outdoor storage of earth and materials, amending chapter ninety-eight, land development regulations, section ninety-eight dash three, definitions of the city land development code, to add a definition of earth and material. Items, item five.
Any commission comments before we open to the public? This is the second reading, anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seen anybody coming forward, we're gonna close it to the public. I do wanna thank Commissioner Drosky for bringing this forward, I think it's gonna be a big help, those residents have been experiencing that issue, so thank you very much.
I'm looking forward to seconding Commissioner Drosky's motion.
With that, I'd like a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Drosky, seconded by Commissioner Miller, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Yes.
Mayor Gans.
Yes. Now we're on public.
I, would you like me to read it again? I did such a good job.
Yes, that'd be great.
Ordinance to the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, amending chapter sixty-six, traffic and vehicles, article...
Should we do public comment first?
We're on the public comment.
I just wanna do this item so badly. Opportunity for public comment, no comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibility shall be permitted. The public shall be given the opportunity to speak on any item which is not on the agenda, so this is for matters that are not on the agenda, you will be given three minutes to speak, with the option of an additional minute, at the discretion of the mayor.
First up, we have Joe Hines.
My name's Joe Hines, I'm at 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. First thing I'd like to say tonight, I'd like to have a little, a public service announcement. Come next Tuesday night, February 12th at 7:00 p.m., there's gonna be a candidate forum held over at the Royal...
Not seen anyone from the public, we'll close it to the public.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes. And it's, when it comes to disclosures, just for public record, we're the ones that put that in place. That didn't exist previously, so that's one of the reasons why it's in the backup, it's part of the Ethics Code that was put in place several years back, I believe, when Commissioner Miller and I were sitting up here when that was added as well. Next item?
Item six, an ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, amending Chapter 66 Traffic and Vehicles, Article Six, Wade Vehicle Limits of the City Code of Ordinances by creating Section 66, has 260 cost recovery for damage to tubular delineators on city streets, roadways, highways, or rights of way. Authorizing the city to recover any cost for damage to tubular delineators, authorizing the city to provide signage indicating such minimum cost, providing for complications, durability, conflict, and ineffective data.
Did we miss five?
We are on five, we said...
Oh, no, we did, well, you guys did miss it, I did. No, I missed five. An ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, amending Section 14-Dash-105, exterior building and structure standards of the City Code of Ordinances to provide regulations regarding outdoor storage of earth and materials, amending Chapter 98, Land Development Regulations, Section 98-Dash-3, definition of the City Land Development Code to add a definition of earth and material. Items, item five.
Any commission comments before we open to the public? This is the second reading, anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seen anybody coming forward, we'll close it to the public. I do want to thank Commissioner Drosky for bringing this forward, I think this is going to be a big help for those residents who've been experiencing that issue, so thank you very much.
I'm looking forward to seconding Commissioner Drosky's motion.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Drosky, seconded by Commissioner Miller. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes. Now we're on public.
Would you like me to read it again? I did such a good job.
Yes, that would be great.
Ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, amending Chapter 66 Traffic and Vehicles, Article...
Should we do public comment first?
We're on the public comment.
I just want to do this item so badly. Opportunity for public comment. No comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted. The public shall be given the opportunity to speak on any item which is not on the agenda. So this is for matters that are not on the agenda, you will be given three minutes to speak with the option of an additional minute at the discretion of the mayor.
First up, we have Joe Hines.
My name is Joe Hines, I'm at 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. First thing I'd like to say tonight, I'd like to have a little, a public service announcement. Come next Tuesday night, February 12th at 7:00 PM, there's going to be a candidate forum held over at the Royal Fiesta in the Cove. It's going to run from 7:00 PM to 8:30, there's going to be light refreshments, it's going to be moderated, and with questions coming from the citizens from District One. We ask everybody from District One to attend, meet our candidates and hear them out. Second thing I'd like is, right here, is all of the month ending in September from 2011 to 2018, on the financial statements for the city. I gave the commissioners a handout, and I'd like to reference that handout. If you look at column A, at the bottom of, well, it says "Commission Approved Budget", and if you add up all those years, the total is a million-two, a little over a million-two. If you look at column C, you'll see that that total for the annual budget has increased to a million-four. The, and if you look over at the unencumbered balance for all those totals of years, the unencumbered balance for all those total years is $121 million. You know, a couple months ago, city revealed it had $62 million in financial savings. What I, what I really find curious about this whole thing is the commission approves a budget of, let's just say, 2018, it's a million-seven, 179 million, and it ends up at $234 million. And that's off your paperwork, that's not mine. It looks like city's running two budgets here, I don't know what the heck all that means. But if you add up all those years, the discrepancy between the approved budget and what, what you're printing out as a final budget for each year, the difference between those two, if you look at item number eight up above, is 1.21 million dollars. I'm sorry, look at item seven, it's 213.9 million dollars, which is a huge amount of money. And the, the unencumbered balance for those years, like I said, was $121 million. I wish somebody could come up and explain that to us, and why are we having two different totals on our budget? Our, our approved budget for each year ought to be whatever it is, and it ought to end up that way, it shouldn't be another $30 million on an average, give or take, from what the commission approves. Now, these are your numbers. I, I think this is serious business, I don't know what's going on, but, and, and it leads to another thing, we just talked about stormwater earlier. I've said all along that stormwater tax is illegal, you guys should have never approved it, I think if you'd had the information available on how much money the city actually had, you would not have approved a tax. I think coming up this, next year for this budget, for the next year, you ought to rescind this tax, and maybe cut, cut a half a point or something off the ad valorem taxes, too. These numbers are huge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris McDonald.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for listening to me, my name is Chris McDonald, I live at 739 Southeast 10th Avenue. The subject property is 804 Southeast 10th Avenue. It's with extreme dismay, frustration, disappointment that I'm forced to appear before you once again. My frustration and dismay are the direct result of a lack of responsiveness from the city, including my lame duck District One Commissioner, all of the departments, contractors, and subcontractors, who do not return phone calls or respond to emails. I do not know what the cause of this lack of communication is, whether it's intentional, negligent, or some kind of legal reason. Approximately eight months ago, I began my efforts as an advocate of the city to get an improperly granted building permit connected, corrected, in order for the city to avoid any litigation. The property is 804 Southeast 10th Avenue, it is an eyesore in an otherwise beautiful part of our city. Despite providing the city with copies of our codes and before and after photographs of the subject property, which definitively prove that the so-called driveway is not in compliance with city code, the city has done nothing. In fact, there has never been construction of this type of concrete parking lot since the city instituted our current code. Our code, Section 98-Dash-88, and its attached illustrations specifically require all driveways to be circular in nature in District One. This property has a huge rectangular concrete lot pad, and yet, the city has done nothing. A concrete pad such as this should require a variance, since it does not comply with code. As you know, variances require notice to the public and an opportunity for the taxpaying public to be heard, neither of which has occurred in this instance. The city has unilaterally reinterpreted the code with no public input. The city has allowed this construction despite the fact that the property owner illegally and surreptitiously at night removed all of the landscaping, including mature trees, without any of the required permits and without a licensed landscaper, in violation of city ordinances, and the city has done nothing. I have been an advocate of the city, trying to help it avoid litigation and the accompanying outrageous expense of a potential federal or state-class action lawsuit. Among the many defendants of such an action, whom would be required to comply with discovery requests would include but not be limited to the city...
Would you like additional minutes?
The city, the mayor, District One Commissioner, all department heads of Deerfield Beach, the inspectors, inspectors involved with this property, all contractors and subcontractors, the owner of the property, the architect who drafted the plan design, and whoever was responsible for the removal of the landscaping and mature trees. Besides the potential damages to the taxpaying citizens of District One for the loss of their property values, possible selective enforcement and laws, and the horrible precedent that would be set by this monstrosity. I have voluminous documents and computer files documenting the lack of responsiveness from the city, I consider this type of governmental activity to be taxation without representation. The city refuses to accept responsibility for an error in its judgment and the noncompliant permit that it issued. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Vicki McKee.
Hello.
If you could please give it to the clerk down there, thank you.
There's like only six houses, so... Yeah, there's only three houses.
Name and address for the record, please.
Vicki McKee, 1348 Southeast 5th Court. What I'm handing out to you right now, you'll see there's a picture of my neighborhood. I want you to note how close the houses are together, and I want you to see the picture of my house, which I put "me" on there, so you can see it. There's a little orange dot there, or a little arrow. The arrow is pointing to my neighbor's fire pit. All right, this has been going on for over six years. I'm tired of breathing smoke. I've talked to Joe Miller about this, I've talked to numerous code enforcements, Broward County Sheriff Fire Department, Broward County EPA, and nobody is addressing the issue of fire pits in our city. So, I'm requesting that the current code, I've also given you a copy of our code, the code doesn't address them either. It addresses open burning, but it has nothing to do with fire pits, fire bowls, chimeneas, et cetera. In our code, it says you're not allowed to have open burning unless you have a permit. The exclusions are that you can have barbecue, or you can have a barbecue pit. Now, my neighbor is getting away with this by saying that she's cooking. She's not cooking, she burns her fires for four hours when she does, she doesn't burn every once in a while, she burns one, two, and three times a week. Winds in South Florida come from the southeast, they direct all of that smoke onto my property. I drive up in my driveway, open the door of my car, and the first thing I smell is smoke, so I know she's burning again. I don't, I think that the problem here is that nobody knows what to do about it because the way the code is written. When BS, when I first started with this, it was code enforcement. Code enforcement doesn't come out at night to see what's going on, they come out the next day after it's done and over with, there's nothing for them to see. So code enforcement told me to call Broward County Sheriff if we have an issue in the evenings. I called Broward County Sheriff, they tell me there's nothing they can do, because when they go over there, she says she's cooking. Also, they're not even allowed on her property to go in her backyard unless she gives them permission to do so. So if she's not going to let them go in there, they're still not going to see what's going on. Also, the, the stuff that she's burning, and I know this for a fact because she told me, she had leftover construction materials, that's pre, that's treated lumber, you can't burn treated lumber, it's got chemicals in it. Two weeks ago, I was out there, heard all this banging and chopping wood, I go out there and overhear the guy say, "Oh, this pallet wood is great for burning, we need to get some more." Well, excuse me, some pallet woods are okay, but some are not, a lot of those pallets come from China, they still are treated. She shouldn't be burning that stuff. And the issue here, again, is I'm breathing it, and I'm concerned about my health.
Would you like another minute?
I think, I mean, I'm kind of nervous, but I think I've covered everything in here, but, but again, I, I mean, we pass laws about smoking in public, we've passed vaping laws about smoking in public, but we can't pass some kind of ordinances about fire pit smoke? And I can't be the only one in this city that has issues with it. I went over to the fire department and talked with one of the guys over there, and he said they get calls all the time about smoke. So I don't know how to look up those reports, I called another, I called our main fire department, she said she couldn't look them up because they don't have a code for that specific problem, they have, they, she could look it up by address, but I, that's the only address I know. I know there's another house like about four blocks from us, he's got a whole, he, like, he's living on a campground, he's got a whole big fire, fire pit built, he's got chairs all around it, and then when they burn their fire, the smoke just goes everywhere. I don't know if people around him have complained, but I don't have the address, so I would have to, but I'm tired of breathing it, it's been six years, and I've, I've just been so patient, and I can't be patient anymore.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Peggy Ross.
I'm Peggy Ross, 103 Northeast 19th Avenue, Deerfield Beach, and I'm here, I guess, on an entirely different thing. I am a District One person. My whole world, I never almost go west of the library, I think. A lot of people in the city, in different departments, kind of know me. I live right across from Sullivan Park, so I watch Sullivan Park every day, I walk the ocean, walk probably two to four miles every day, and I just want to say thank you to all of the workers and people that are there every day and in the evening, cleaning up the trash, picking up things in the street, for the amount of people that we have that come and go from there. They help keep what I call my world a beautiful, clean, safe, that's the, the men, the women who I don't think ever get thanked, you, the Sheriff's Department that's there watching when I walk at night, so I feel safe. So I just would like to be sure that they all know that at least one person appreciates their work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Daniel Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Esteemed Commissioners, I've got some...
Mr. Turner, if you, you hand it to the clerk there, and then just give your name and address for the record.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't believe I brought one for everybody, I wasn't expecting Mr. City Attorney. Dan Turner, I'm at 1278 Southeast 7th Court, it's in District One in the Cove. My wife and I just recently committed to half a million dollars cash out of our pocket investment into this wonderful city. Born and raised in a little town called Fort Lauderdale, 1960, so I've been out to Whale's Rib and Deerfield Beach maybe so longer than most anybody in this room. Immediately upon moving into the Cove, I learned some things about our neighborhood. One was, we had just, through the diligent efforts of Broward Sheriff's Office, combated a property crime spree that was going on. I also learned that we were having, and continue to have, and have had exasperated, a traffic and traffic control issue in that neighborhood. Now, I've spoken to Mr. Mayor about it directly, he took the time to call me as a constituent. I've spoken with the Sheriff's Department, lieutenants, sergeants, every one of them, even the deputy who is doing radar on, radar on my street today, know me, recognize me, and have heard directly my appreciation for their diligent efforts. To a man, they're doing everything that they can, and as a department, equally so. I spoke to Mr. Good, finally, who informed me that calming measures were in fact coming, and I appreciate all of that, because Mr. Mayor, just a day after we spoke, my five-year-old boxer was run down, standing right next to me with my schnauzer on the other side of me, the three of us almost getting hit by a young man who ultimately showed some responsibility, I'll be very happy to say, hey, and his family seem like good people. But the issue is past urgent. Mr. City Manager, with respect, sir, I don't understand why my numerous calls have gone unreturned, except by others you've directed to call me back. Candidly, my future investment in this city, which I plan to make within the millions of dollars range, yes, I'm trying to earn money on my investments, anybody in here who's not, I think needs to be questioned about some sanity. But I also plan to eventually reside in this community. As I'm making the investment and trying to make money, I'm bringing good families into improved homes, that are improving the tax base, and improving the merchants' business prospects in, in this area. Every one of you Commissioners are going to be benefited by that, because you all have businesses in the area.
Would you like additional minutes?
If I may, Your Honor, thank you. And so I implore you to get on top of this, because it's not just an owner-centric issue. I have six pages from next door of my neighbors posting again, about a thread that I put in here about speed in the Cove, and we need to do something about it. I know speed humps are going in and things like that, we need to do something post haste, and we need to do something about the problem with speed at large in this city, because this community is definitely going to be impacted by it more and more. Hillsborough Boulevard, Federal Highway, 12th, and, and 10th Street, these are all areas that need extreme attention. BSO is doing everything they can, I appreciate them greatly. Something was misconstrued, I might add, that I was complaining about their performance, quite the opposite. I am very glad to say they've been wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
So, let's get on top of it, folks, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to comment?
Hi, Elise Miller Plotkin, 1998 Northeast 7th Street. I just want you to be aware about the changes that are at Deerfield Beach, the beach area, so that we avoid like an issue if new businesses come in. At the present time, there are five stores that are vacant, and I don't know if the businesses have to get permits when they have buildings for sale, like there's one across the street from Burger Fries, that's for sale now at 1.5 or 1.8 million. I don't know if you're aware, when a business applies for a permit, of what they intend to put there. I just want to give you a heads up, so that we don't run into businesses that don't belong at the beach. I know that some of us that live at the beach are not so happy about having medical marijuana stored there, because I don't feel that that suits the area as a business that suits the beach. So if there's any way, if businesses apply for those stores, if you could get a heads up from whoever, to let you know what they intend to put there, because I wouldn't like there to be a liquor store, a strip joint, or something that's not positive for the area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good afternoon, Sandra Jackson, 386 Southwest 35th Avenue. I got, want you guys to listen to something, hopefully it'll play.
Can I ask what this is? Can I ask what that is?
It's recorded, I'm getting from a realtor.
Okay.
It's nothing bad, believe me, I've already been lied on, so I don't play that. I've already been lied on, so I don't play that.
Hi, my name is Vitali. I'm a local real estate investor in Broward County. I was in your neighborhood, saw your property, and I'm interested in buying it. If you're interested in selling it, give me a call, 954-614-0878. That's 954-614-0878.
Okay, um, that's just one of them, okay? I'm getting calls. My question is how to get my phone number because my phone number is not under my name for one, okay? So I'm wondering if coming from the city. My concern is because District Two, I'm getting letters. I have property over in District Two. And I'm getting letters every day, almost every day. Three, four, five letters a day. And I'm trying to find what's really going on because we're getting so much call violation that a lot of people not even aware of, that they have cold violation on their property. So I'm concerned about that. Um, I heard Mr. McDonald over here where I feel like a lot of people are being selected, persons, like personal attack against their property. That's one of the things I came up about. I have some more recordings also. Another thing I want to talk on, on MLK. I came up here at the last commission meeting and said that people was going to boycott because of what was done. I was also told by Mr. Scott that you guys do not want to pay for a special speaker because it costs $10,000. So I want to know when you guys have a funders there, are you going to do the same thing? Not pay any money for the special speakers there because you got to be fair for everybody? As I told you before, people all over America, colored folks, okay, fought to get that day on that Monday, the third Monday of January. And I don't think it's fair that you guys did that MLK on Saturday. And whoever was part of this on the event board, you guys need to change those representative because it's not fair to the people. A lot of people in our community was upset about it, and I don't care what you guys say, it was wrong. And also, I just want to straighten something out. I got a call saying that I was supposed to be blocking the MLK parade on that Saturday. And whoever told that lie to the officer was not true. You guys heard me in the meeting that it was going to be boycotted, and it was boycotted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Preston, 640 Southwest 14th Court, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I wish it was such that I was here to say to the mayor, to the commission, great job, and to staff for the Martin Luther King Holiday Observances. Instead, I'm here to tell you that all who took part in the planning of MLK should actually be ashamed because this is an example of failed leadership. Dr. King gave so much, this man gave so much to his country. And we in the city, to him, if this is the best we could do, we gave very little. The city of Deerfield Beach did not do its best job. And I'm sure you can probably try to spin it and say that you, yet you did, but you didn't. This was not good at all. I went to the parade. It was poorly attended. If you were to take what we did in the city of Deerfield Beach to honor a great man, to say that, that what we did honored him would be wrong. What we did in the city of Deerfield Beach for this great American who eventually gave his life, Dr. King was dishonored. And nobody, nobody should celebrate anything that was happening that was attached to it. It was wrong, and it should change. Dr. King did what he did because he was trying to unify. Do you know where the parade starts? The parade starts off on a back street, and then it makes its way to Hillsborough. Dr. King event is not a black thing, but rather a community thing, an American thing. It's not just for black people, it's for everybody. When I was a, a part of the commission, I asked that that parade, which it was, start over in the Cove, get on Hillsborough, and, and, and go over to West Side. Why was that? That was to bring everybody together, to bring everybody together. And if you say that this was the best that we can do, then we ought to say we need to change it. But everybody, that should start with knowing that Dr. King was not honored the way that he should have been honored. Everybody else, that Monday, was celebrating what that holiday was about, except the city of Deerfield Beach. Nothing was going on. And if you feel good about that, then that's okay. But it was wrong, and it should never happen again.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
May Frances Fagan, 3500 Southwest Notary Boulevard, city of Deerfield Beach. Two things are concerned, my concern is, one is Martin Luther King Day was a tragedy. I lived through segregation, and this was not. It was an insult. It was just something that I wouldn't even take my dog to listen to my grandchildren. It was a tragedy. Now, we went to Pompano, and we also went to Boca. And the insulting thing is Boca don't even have a black representation there, a represent, a person that sits up on the desk. But we do. And for that tragedy to happen in the city of Deerfield was such an insult. It was a very insulting to us that have lived here in Deerfield, was here before you all came here. We have been here pioneers, our parents were pioneers, and we have seen the difference in the city of Deerfield come, come to part. But now, you seem like you want to separate it. We're going back to segregation? That should not be. Also, my concern is every time I go to Publix on Military Trail, I have a person out there riding, uh, going with a violin, okay? Then you have a family standing out there when they see code enforcement. Then we have another guy sitting up in the bushes, and then you meet, people meet you at your car with that blasted pies. I'm sick and tired of it. That's not why I go to Publix. I go there because that's where I want to go. This is convenient for me. But I shouldn't have to be insulted and approached with a that blasted pie. I don't know where the devil you made the pie from, you know? And so then there's a man sitting out there with a violin. This is horrible. I don't know what, this is America, I know that. But we'd never had, you stop the man that was raised here in Deerfield on 10th Street from sitting out there begging, you need to stop these people. It's a tragedy.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening, everybody. Michael Hudak, 34 Southeast 9th Avenue. What I'd like to talk to a little bit about is the marijuana distribution centers that are going on in the city. The fourth one has just opened up, and I'd like to know what the commission is going to do or what they possibly can do to ensure that these facilities, should the state of Florida legalize marijuana, not change their business model to become smoke houses or be able to sell marijuana for recreational purposes? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Benjamin Woods, 235 Southwest 3rd Court, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I just want to start by saying, you know, growing up during the Martin Luther King Parade, it was something that, you know, we all looked forward to as a child, you know, just being out there and participating and, you know, understanding the meaning of what it was about and having our respect being shown. This upcoming Martin Luther King Parade, it was first off held on a Saturday in which a lot of, 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 I would say, teens and, uh, people around my age group really wasn't involved or, you know, we didn't know about it, plain and simple. We didn't know about it. And, um, you, we used to have it on Mondays. And what it represented was something that wasn't really like, it, it didn't really show much thought and much care into it. So I just wanted to say, you know, if we're looking for something in the future to be different, and we're looking for something to, you know, have, for the city to be stood up and, and well, I would say that something needs to be done differently about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Say what you do, do what you say. A simplistic term whose meaning is critical to consistency, efficiency, and lawful boundaries. Two of the most critical organizations in this city, financial services and human relations, have incomplete or outdated internal procedures. Sadly, our city manager has not prioritized the need to ensure complete and up-to-date internal controls are in place. We have had open issues from the independent financial auditor for nearly nine years with a status next year to implement corrections. Human Resources have internal procedures that are no longer relevant, and I was told that to my face, and had a plan to update their manual by November 2018. It's February. Without the necessary internal controls, there is a higher risk of inconsistent management, process inefficiency, and outright failure to meet ordinances and statutes. We've already seen some examples of these, or, income, in, these internal control issues, such as overpayment to retirees over 65, use of reclassification to avoid the formal promotion process, capital improvements budgeted, such as the, capital improvements that are not budgeted, such as the artificial reef, but yet show up, uh, don't show up in the capital improvement element. Now, I just want to touch base. I noticed that the city put the quarterly results up on the, uh, like a scorecard. I commend you for that, uh, but it doesn't tell the whole picture, the whole story. I looked at the 15th December financial report, and as you may remember, I provided a, a number of comments that could have saved the city $7 million had they even looked at them. CRA use of general fund employees, I predicted a $220,000 underrun. Well, currently, the status is we're going to see approximately $141,000. But there has been no sharing on the, uh, the Director of Economic Development, so maybe that goes right back up to 200. Financial services, planning and zoning, community development salary, all of them I identified as being padded. The pre-budget underrun I predicted was 220,000. If the trend continues, it'll be 318,000. BSO contract, I predicted a hundred, a, a million-dollar underrun. It appears there may be an overrun. I don't know. The first billing for this year showed up in December, and they're overrunning 34%. Anyone know what that's caused by? Because it cost me $80 to investigate. The recreation department, I predicted, may I have another minute, please? I predicted $150,000 underrun. Trends show 164,000. Utility fund, admin, engineering, I predicted 600,000. If trends stay, it'll be 697,000. The water plant, I predicted 213,000 underrun. Right now, the trends are showing 736,000 of underrun. Utility maintenance, 63,000. It's running at about 364,000. So I, to my face, I was told I don't understand budgets and financial reports. I think that maybe, uh, may have been said a little bit out of poor judgment, Mayor, since you're the one that said it. And you really need to look at facts and listen to people who may know a little bit more than you think.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Elise Miller Plotkin, 1998.
You've already spoke once, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
No, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't know. I just want to say...
No, you, uh, you've already spoke once to the public.
Oh, I didn't know that. Oh, I just forgot to say something before.
That's okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Dan Hirsch, 337, Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. On December 4th, 2018, at the end of the commission meeting that night, Mr. Gans instructed staff to prepare an ordinance for the next commission meeting on January 15th of this year prohibiting pharmacies and medical marijuana dispensaries in the B1 zoning district. After a presentation by the lawyers representing Temma Holdings LLC and MedMen, Mr. Gans was quoted in the January 18, 2019 edition of the Pelican newspaper, saying, "I didn't know you guys were so far along," he told attorneys for Temma Holdings, owners of the property at 2009 Northeast 2nd Street on the S-curve. Now, I know Mr. Gans was telling the truth when he said that. What I find difficult to understand is that the attorney for Temma, Stephanie J. Toothacre, painstakingly went through 12 different times between July 2018 and November 2018 in which her client had contact with city officials. Why didn't any of the city officials that Ms. Toothacre was in contact with tell Mayor Gans how far along they were on this project? Isn't there any communications between city staff and the mayor? I know Mr. Eric Power was mentioned by name as the city official who signed the zoning certification letter. I am curious as to why Mr. Power did not let anyone, including his boss, City Manager Burgess Hansen, know about this so the mayor could have known what was going on before he asked staff to draft the ordinance for the January 15th commission meeting? This breakdown in communication is very peculiar, and I am hoping Mr. Power or City Manager Burgess Hansen can shed some light on this. The other item I would like to bring up involves the handout given to City Attorney, Andy Maratus. At the three-hour, 57-minute, and 30-second mark of the last city commission meeting, Mr. Gans revealed to the public that I had filed a complaint against him with the Florida Elections Commission in Tallahassee. The problem is, when Mr. Gans spoke up about the complaint, he violated Florida State Election Statute 106.25. Let me read from the state statute. "Every sworn complaint filed pursuant to this chapter with the commission and every proceeding of the commission with respect to a violation of this chapter or Chapter 104 is confidential. Any person who discloses any information or matter made confidential by the provisions of this subsection commits a misdemeanor of the first degree punishable as provided in the two codes mentioned." Mr., may I have another minute, please? "Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Gans's actions have called into question the integrity of the coming election on March 12th. I ask you, Mr. Maratus, to publicly or privately explain to the mayor that he cannot keep breaking Florida Election Statute laws and knowingly or unknowingly undermine my ability to participate on an even playing field for the upcoming March 12th election." On a much less serious note, I do want to compliment two Parks and Recreation employees, Elizabeth Ritchie and Allison Fitzsimmons, for their hard work after the Martin Luther King Parade when they single-handedly, for at least 45 minutes, helped feed a, a whole bunch of people who had came over to the football field. They were all alone with no other city officials for about the first 40 to 45 minutes, and they did an exemplary job, and I think they are to be commended. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening. Diane Chisholm, 375 Northwest 7th Court, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I am just up here wanting to say just a couple of things. I would like to remind, um, city officials, not necessarily city officials, elected city officials, that you have an obligation to your communities. And the one thing I want to say is that I, like Dr. King, hope that I live to see the day, that we don't have a District One, a District Two, District Three, and District Four singled out. We are all one people. We need to learn to get, uh, get along together. We need to respect each other. We have an obligation to each other, and I think that this is a big problem. We are all so separated. We need to come together as one, live in the city of Deerfield Beach as one, where we don't look at things as in District One, District Two, District Three. And I would like to remind our upcoming officials who are getting ready to follow this election that you have an obligation to the people. You are not here for yourselves. You are here for your communities. And I too was a little disgusted over the Dr. King day being changed from Monday to Saturday or Friday. I had so many phone calls. I don't know who's telling these people that I'm an elected official, but I'm not. I continue to get phone calls with all kinds of things going on in the city. And the thing that I tell them is go to your city officials and let them know how you feel about certain things. So I would employ the city to do everything you can to make this one community and not four districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Yes, ma'am. Just your name and address for the record. Is your name and address for the director?
Sure. My name is Julie Rodriguez, I live at 150 Southeast 7th Street in Deerfield Beach. Very quick and just want to let you know you all are elected officials. I'm just very disappointed when people in the community call you and you do not return the calls, especially you, Mr. City Manager. You have some other people return your calls for you. You're all elected, and you all can be replaced. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Freedom I C, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I really feel I have to because I don't want you guys to get a bum rap. I don't think what went on with Martin Luther King should lie on your shoulders. I think it was within your own community. You guys have to get together amongst yourselves. My understanding was, and I might be talking out of place, but the reason why it was on Saturday because they wanted to have the bands there, all these bands were only available on Saturday, not on Monday because they were in other parades and what have you. I feel I am in District 1.
Ms. Massey, hold a moment. If anyone in the audience is making comments, please keep it to yourselves and show respect for the speaker like they did for you.
Thank you. I for one, and a lot of my people in, my people, a lot of the people that live in District 1, we do not segregate ourselves or anybody else. We are one city. It's all for one and one for all. In fact, if you'll notice that on Saturday, the Women's Club was over in District 2 helping to serve, we were at the field for Martin Luther King helping to serve. We are one city. You have to work it out within your own district amongst yourselves, and don't give the rest of us a bum rap, especially the people that are sitting up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public care to speak? Not seeing anybody come forward and close it to the public. Just to address a couple of the things on there, Ms. McKee, I'm not sure how we can regulate smoke, but I think we might be something that we should look into perhaps to see about the proximity of having these within a setback, so that's something we can possibly look at. And City Attorney, if we could look at that. Now, I don't know if anybody's far along in the process of putting in a smoke pit or anything like that, I don't want to be accused later of not checking first and having all this information before I make a motion. It's all right, ma'am, I'm saying this facetiously because someone seems to misunderstand when people give a directive up here exactly what that means, so just in case anybody's in the pipeline, I'm sure that might come back later. But Ms. McKee, thank you for bringing that forward, I know that's been frustrating with that. The other gentleman, we have been in contact, Mr. McDonald, we have been in contact because I've seen the emails back and forth on this issue, and I think the city attorneys, I believe, have spoken directly with the gentleman. And their interpretation of it, of what the rules were. Mr. Turner, the traffic calming is happening in the code, but it is something that the residents in that neighborhood need to come together and decide, it's almost, while we're looking at it as an overview, we're also looking at it on individual streets as well. If people can come in and they can apply for traffic calming at any point in time by filling out an application. As far as the MLK parade, I'm disappointed that, the others who are disappointed, that's a shame. We put together a committee who was tasked with members of the community, including the bishop of one of the speakers who is here, so if you want to remove that person from the committee, it's going to be pretty uncomfortable at church on Sunday, I would imagine for you, but you can talk to him directly if you'd like. The input was directly from this committee on how they would like this to be conducted. You talked about having the parade start on a side street in a neighborhood? Yes, it's the same location in which our Pioneer Day, or our Pioneer Day Parade starts, it's the same place that has started in other years for other parades, it's been historically there. This one has changed a bit. But it's disappointing that people that had come out on Monday who said that they were upset the parade wasn't there, but we had a day of service. After the traditional event that's always there on Monday morning, everyone walked and marched down the street all the way over to Pastor Ford's Linear Park on 10th Street and did a whole planting and planted a beautiful garden over there, and people weren't participating. No outbursts, we didn't speak when you were speaking, you've had your moment. Thank you. It's a shame more people didn't participate in that. It's the same, some people showed up briefly and then maybe left. Obligations, we certainly understand. I think the city has done a good job in trying to reach out to the community and get their input. It's a shame that after the fact, everybody wants to come back in and Monday morning quarterback it, but that comes with the job, and I think we all understand that. When it comes to, and I'm trying to make sure I have everything else here, no, I don't think people do understand a municipal budget. And if you're going to sit back and say that you, I'm not saying that you're not smart, I'm not saying that you can look at numbers and have an interpretation of it, but there's a reason that we get audited every single year. If there was financial shenanigans, two sets of books, trust me, we would know it. The state attorney's office, the Board of Ethics, all these other organizations keep a strong eye on what's going up here on the dais. They're no stranger to removing people that have sat up here. We've had the last mayor that pled guilty to several ethics charges. We had another mayor that was removed from office, we had a District 2 commissioner removed from office, and we had a District 4 commissioner for removing office. Where people get away with making innuendos and slander and smearing it because we're public officials, and you're allowed to do that because constitutionally you can, and the bar is set much higher for us, stop being lazy, file your complaints, let's see where they go, because then I can stand up and hold it up to the public and say, "These guys are wrong. These guys have misinterpreted and lied flat out. Do it, I dare you. I have nothing to hide. Go for it." All right? Diane Chisholm, you are not an elected official, but you represent the city well, and we are one city. And as the mayor, it is different. When you sit up here, you look at it not as 1, 2, 3, and 4, you do look at it as a city as a whole, so I understand what you're saying on that, and your point's well taken. Ms. Rodriguez, my cellphone number is on the city website, people can call me and reach me very easily, and I do return phone calls. And I think staff, pardon?
I said I wasn't.
That's all right, and you don't have to respond to me. I'm just saying in general, our staff does the best they can on that, and I understand that our city manager on some of the issues might direct it to somebody who's going to have that dealt with specifically. And I think what it's called is delegation sometimes, and if people look at it as being disrespectful, I don't think that's what your intent is, although I'm speaking for you and I probably shouldn't. I think I've covered everything for the most part. If there's any unanswered questions, please feel free to ask me after the meeting. Yes. You're finally getting to your.
I'm getting to, I want to get to this item 6 badly. Item 6, An Ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach Amending Chapter 66 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 6 Vehicle Limit Weights of the City Code of Ordinances by Creating Section 66260 Cost Recovery for Damage to Tubular Delineators on City Streets, Roadways, Highways, and where rights are way authorizing the city to recover any cost for damage to tubular delineators, authorizing the city to provide signage indicating such minimum costs.
Staff comments on this?
Thank you. I do have Mr. Good here to answer any questions. Just quickly, this is dealing with the issue on Southwest 12th Avenue with the commercial vehicles that are waiting to enter the Publix Distribution Center. What's happened is they tear off the roadways, it's also dangerous for motorists, we've had quite a few complaints from the nearby Newport Center business owners and employees there, as well as just trying to keep that clean. We've handed out numerous parking violations, but that's much cheaper and the truck drivers will just pay it. We have approached Publix Distribution Center in the past about having them park within their property to no avail from Publix, probably because of liability and insurance reasons, so we are now taking this to the next level to make it more potent for the drivers, so when they get a ticket, it's going to hurt a little bit more. Thank you.
Any commission comments regarding this? I think this is a good thing, very much so. Anyone from the public care to comment on item number 6? Not seeing anybody coming forward, I'm going to close it to item number 6.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnez.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Yes.
Mayor Gans.
Yes. Update regarding the design and construction of the new Center for Active Aging.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, I'll have Mr. Santucci give an overview of the Center for Active Aging. And just quickly, we are, this has no impact on the schedule for the project, and at the next commission meeting, we'll be bringing forward the Tigner Center, which is another bond project that Mr. Santucci's overseeing. So, with that, Mr. Santucci, come up quickly.
Good evening, thank you, City Manager, Dave Santucci, Assistant City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Vice Mayor, City Commissioner. Can, there we go, okay. The purpose of this presentation is just to provide you with an update on the status of the design and construction of the Center for Active Aging, because we are at a significant milestone, I would say, in the development of this project, so it's only pertinent to bring this before you, to show you where we are at and what we have to show you publicly here for the first time, which I'm very excited about. First, this is, again, just to provide you with a presentation and overview of the proposed improvements on the entire campus. As you can see in this picture right here in this aerial, this is the entire campus, the front, or I should say the lower left-hand building there is the existing preschool area, and then you have the Northeast Focal Point Senior Center along with the Alzheimer's Daycare and the administration buildings, all with the gray roofs, and then towards the back and the tan-colored roofs would be the Old Thrift Store and the DeHornley Center, which are currently unoccupied. So, it's served the community for over 38 years, and it's the location of the previous Braithwaite Elementary, which closed in 1970. Some of the seniors who attend the Center for Active Aging actually were also attendees of the elementary school, and it is a former Broward County Health Department facility as well. The first building was built in 1981, and the center expanded to include an Alzheimer's Daycare Center, the multicultural day service center, preschool and thrift shop. And then in 2017, the center and the department was rebranded to the Center for Active Aging and the Department of Active Aging, so that we could give a focus on a 21st century goal for the elderly community here in the, that would be the northeast section of Broward County. So, obviously focusing on improved quality of life, promoting the independence, and encouraging the involvement in the community with learning independence, friends, and engagement. These are just a few of the services that are provided here at the Center for Active Aging, but the Center for Active Aging was developed as a partnership between the city and the area-wide Council of Aging to provide support services to the area's population of 60 years or older. And why do we need a new facility? Again, as we've discussed previously, you know, it's functionally inadequate, its structural integrity and hurricane vulnerability has been exposed in the various hurricanes that we've had recently. It lacks insufficient technology. We have failing mechanical systems in our HVAC, our plumbing, and our electric at this point, and we're wasting natural resources, meaning that the electrical systems, the HVAC systems, and the size of the facility for the programming and purpose that it serves is inadequate. It's spatially inefficient because of the multiple buildings on the campus, and it has inadequate security, no single point of entry, it is a pretty open campus except for, of course, the security measures related to the preschool. So, as I move through the next set of slides, and until the end, you're going to see the new renderings that have been developed by our consultant, Walter Zachariah and Associates, and I will speak on a lot of the points throughout the presentation and just let everybody go ahead and take these in and look for comment at the end. But the idea first was obviously to identify the key goals, the priorities, the programming requirements, and the spatial needs for this new facility, and to consolidate that programming and the operations into one single new building. We obviously want to ensure that this facility conforms to the Pioneer Grove Design Standards, which it does. We want to ensure that it obviously provides a safe and secure environment for our visitors and staff, and we want to make sure that the building is modern with current and technology as well as green building standards, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Of course, we also want to make sure that it's compliant with current hurricane building codes. On the last hurricane that we had, that facility was offline for several days due to power outages and repairs that needed to take place before we could open it. This new facility will allow us to reopen the center quickly after a hurricane, as it will be on generator power. We obviously want to have effective use of space, and this is a rudimentary floor plan of the building and where certain functions and programs will occur throughout the facility. So, I know that's a little bit hard to see, but the senior center admin offices are there in purple, and the senior center, the senior services center is in the light blue, the adult daycare center is in the green, general support services and administration is in red, and then the general circulation of the building there is in the yellow, of course, providing all of the services that it does today in relation to the adult daycare center, the senior center, the administrative offices, and community development offices. Sustainability is a major focus on this project. We want to ensure that the materials used are low VOC, meaning it doesn't give any chemical off-gassing. It will have a white roof as an energy efficiency measure, it will have insulated gas to conserve energy. We'll, what did I say?
Gas.
Did I say gas?
But it's insulated gas, that's it.
So, it will have insulated hurricane glass for energy savings. We're going to use recycled materials where we can in the construction of the facility, and all of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems will go through a building automation system. And that building automation system is coming from smart building technology through Siemens' integration. And if you remember, there was an item before you some time ago for the Energy Performance Contracting, which was awarded to Siemens, we are in the investment-grade audit portion of that contract, we are almost done with that, and you will soon see the information related to that particular endeavor. The interesting thing here is we recognize that if Siemens is going to be looking at our existing buildings, and they're going to be making recommendations on mechanical, electrical, plumbing, HVAC systems, building automation, security, technology, all these sorts of things that Siemens brings to the table, then we want to make sure that they are compatible and that there's standardization with our newer facilities. So, we had the ability to take our, get our consultants and Siemens together and get them on the same page in terms of what we were looking for in our new facilities, and be able to spec and scope the same information, or I should say, systems and hardware and software that we'll be putting into all of our facilities. So, that was an opportunity that we took advantage of. We're going to make sure that this is a much more secure building with a single point of entry for both of our patrons and our staff's safety. This will also include the ability to do asset monitoring and tracking for our clientele and our property. And what I mean by that is the Siemens technology that will be put into the light fixtures is a system called Enlightened, and this is what they like to call a future-proof technology, meaning you can turn this into whatever you want. And currently, some of the ideas we have is asset tracking, which can either be done through RFID or heat signature. So, we So when you're talking about a vulnerable population or the Alzheimer's daycare, you may have, as a caregiver, concern for your loved one that they won't wander off or are they still there for the adult daycare services? Well, this would allow us to show that caregiver that, yes, they're still there. We have them. They're in this room, so on and so forth. So it's really tremendous technology that we could implement. We can also do it for our assets that are in the building, like computers or expensive equipment and those sorts of things as well. So it's very interesting stuff. Of course, we will also include twenty-four-seven high-definition video surveillance monitoring that will be monitored just across the street at the BSO office. This is part of the larger project that we have for video surveillance throughout our city. We'll incorporate that into this building. And from a construction administration perspective, we obviously want to make sure that we keep the existing facilities and programs open through the construction. And the demolition plan is going to provide for that. The building will be set in, off in the back where, the new building will be set off in the back where the DeHornly Center and the thrift shop is. So we'll be able to take those existing buildings down first that are vacant, do the new construction, maintain the programming at the facilities that are occupied today. Once the construction is complete, they can move into the new building and we can finish the rest of the demolition. We obviously want to keep costs in line with the budget. And so far, we are doing that. So everything that we have presented to you tonight, everything that's within our specifications and our scope is still in line with the budget as it was presented many months ago. Then, of course, we obviously want to maintain the project's schedule. So the project's schedule here is, once we receive public comment and commission comment, obviously, commission comment tonight, we'll have public comment on, I should have mentioned, Monday night on the eleventh at six-thirty, we have a public workshop at the Hillsborough Technology Center, where we're hoping to have the public come out and see the same presentation. It'll be given by our architect that time. And we will have large-scale renderings for people to look at, all of the same images that you're seeing here tonight. But we will put out that RFQ shortly thereafter, within the next thirty days. And that RFQ will get us to selecting a qualified pool of contractors that we will go before you for approval on after we make the recommendation. Following that, we will issue the drawings to the bidders through an RFP process, go through that RFP process, work to negotiate a contract, which will be brought before you, issue our notice to proceed, begin construction, and then have about a one-year construction timeframe and a grand opening.
I have some questions. With the footprint that this design shows, do we lose any square footage of the facility?
So the total square footage of all buildings on that campus is approximately forty-three thousand square feet. But I want you to take a look at the picture right here. And as I mentioned, those two large buildings in the back, or the top right, are the largest buildings on the campus, yet vacant and unoccupied, okay? So I don't know the exact square footage on them, but let's just say it's about forty percent, maybe more. The existing, so that's forty-three thousand square feet on the entire campus. The new building will be twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet and is based on the programming and the administrative requirements to run those programs.
Okay. The decision was, appears to have been made, and I'm not sure, I don't recall the commission having a say in this, to move the preschool to another facility? We still have an ability to change that path, is that correct?
We certainly can. Right now, it is scheduled to go, or it's planned that it would be part of the Tigner Community Center with Parks and Recreation Department, where we feel there's better operational functionality with the staff there than what we have currently at the northeast, or at the Center for Active Aging. On top of that, in the future, we may be looking at changes in that, in how we provide that, that service to the public in general terms. Because right now, we have enrollment that hovers around seventeen to nineteen students. And it has not increased. There are several other private daycare centers, such as the Learning Center, which has put their national headquarters here in the city at the Hillsborough Technology Park and provide that service, as well as many small businesses that provide that same service. So that may be something in the future that the city commission may even have to look at. I believe current, in the current fiscal year, it's approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we expend to provide the daycare service there.
Okay. Back to my point, can we move it back there if the commission says we want to move it back there?
We certainly work at the will of the city commission. So if that's something the city commission wants us to consider, we will make the effort to move it back in the design.
I'd like some options on that. One of the things that we've been able to tout about this center that we have, and it's certainly in need of updating, and I'm a little, I'm going to go back to it because I'm confused about your response regarding the square footage of this. But one of the neat things that we've been able to witness firsthand is when you have the daycare there with the Alzheimer's patients as well, their interaction is a tremendous benefit for the patients and I think personally for the kids as well. And this is something we've been able to tout over the years. It was mentioned to me that there was a, that it was suggested to move it to the Tigner Center, which certainly has its pros and cons as well, just like keeping it here would have its pros and cons. What I don't recall is the commission having a say in definitively doing that. So I would like the option to look if we put that back in there. But to go back to my point about the square footage, I know there's part of that facility that we're not using now, okay? Based on the facility that we, but all of this is going to be incorporated. We're using that, we're using everything, right?
So the DeHornly Center?
Yes.
Is empty and the thrift shop is completely empty. That probably makes up about forty to forty-five percent of the total square footage, which totals forty-three thousand square feet. So you're looking at about, actually, square footage that's being used today, I would imagine is probably in the range of about twenty-three to, maybe twenty-three thousand square feet. So this building will be twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet.
That explains it. Why are we taking existing structures that give us a total of forty-three thousand potential square feet to use for services? And bringing it down and essentially giving us a building that's the same size as what we're currently using, minus the facilities that were not? Because it wasn't that long ago the thrift shop was operational. While there, it certainly had its people that loved it. It was not something that was sustainable for the city long-term. I understand the modernization. I understand some things would cause some shrinkage, so to speak. But it would seem to me what I would, what the intent of this was, is to better set us up in the future for the future needs of the city of Deerfield Beach. The attendance at this location is going to increase with the new facility. People are going to see it. They're going to want to use it. We should have the ability to expand, not retract. So that's my two cents on it. And this is what I've heard also from many people in the public, who've gotten a little bit of a preamble on this. I don't know how they did, but they had a little more insight than what we've been given so far. So I am concerned about that.
So one of the things that this building provides for is because it's, and I'm trying to get the picture. All right, so imagine this being in the northwest corner of the campus, because that's where it will be. The entire campus allows for a sister facility. It's being designed for the thought of expansion in the future. Not necessarily the particular building, which I understand is what you're getting at. But I just want, will let you know that we are, the entire campus is being built so that a sister facility could be built on it as well.
And I think that's smart, and that's a good thing to do. But again, you have an existing structure that's forty-three thousand square feet. And we're going to build a new building that's smaller than that. I don't understand that.
Well, part of it, Mayor Gans, is also the funding capacity of the city in order to do this project, along with the Tigner Center, the city hall renovation, and also the street resurfacing, you had X amount of dollars that we felt comfortable-
Very aware, very aware of that.
-of bringing forward. So working with Ms. DeFranzo and her staff, along with the architects, on what the functionalities would be, we felt this was sufficient. And that's why we brought this forward. And we've talked about the square footage in the past, just not at workshops, but even when we've discussed the bond. So, yeah, we'd all like to have a larger facility, but you have bonding capacities and future, you know, payments. And to be safe, we felt this would be the best route to go from a financial standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Bowles?
I'm not going to belabor the issue of square footage because that was one of the first things that I wanted to talk about, Ms. Mayor, but I think you sufficiently covered it. But just suffice it to say that I have some concerns about us really lessening the square footage when we have forty-three thousand total square footage as is. And now we're going down to twenty-two thousand five hundred, which is even one thousand less than what we have now. What I do want to talk about is the daycare center. That daycare center was put there for a reason. And it's one of those programs, the intergenerational program, that has had such a success. I've heard so many calls from people, not only parents of children that go there, but also from people who have family members in the Alzheimer's program. And that is a program, Mr. City Manager, that everybody speaks highly of. We lose our flavor when we take that out of there. I know we're saying we're going to put the children over to Tigner Center, one way or the other. But the reason why it was there was so that the children could interact with those people that has Alzheimer's. So it doesn't make any sense for us to move those children over to the Tigner Center. We need to keep them or have someplace on-site at the Center for Active Aging Living, rather than putting them over at the Tigner Center. I know that we had a grant to do that. I don't know if grant funding has dried up. I would say to staff then, Mr. City Manager, that if the funding source cannot continue to provide those type funds for this type of a program, we need to be shopping it elsewhere. There are some foundations that we could tap into, so let's see about doing that. I really would like to see that program reinstated right at this particular center because that is where it's needed the most.
Thank you. I don't see any other commission comments. I am going to open it to the public, the city manager?
Yeah, just quickly, just to address the whole issue. When you look at the forty-three or the exact square footage that is now, those are unusable in current standards with code, everything else. To build a forty-three thousand square foot facility, this twenty-three thousand square foot facility is, what is it, twelve point? What's the final number?
Just over twelve million?
Yeah, just a little over twelve million. So that would basically be close to, you know, well over twenty million, approaching probably twenty-four million to build that. So that was another reason this entire bond, revenue bond, that would take up more than half of the funds that were asked for in that bond. So that was another reason why we did not bring it all forward. Another approach to look at this is the fact that this is just not a Deerfield Beach resident facility. You know, if one built a much larger facility or even build an add-on than cities like Pompano, Coconut Creek, Broward County, and others that come to this facility, then they should also provide funding for this. It just should not be the taxpayers within Deerfield Beach. But we'll certainly go back, if that's the wish of the city commission, and make some changes to this to include the daycare center. And we know we'll just reallocate the dollars from the Tigner Center back into the Center for Active Aging.
Commissioner Partas?
I'm very much for the center. And I've heard comments, well, we have a new building. It's going to grow. I like the idea that we have the ability to expand. Let's walk before we run. Let's build a center, see how we're doing. If we need expansion, then we'll expand. If we don't, it's adequate. If what we're currently using now is about twenty-three thousand square feet, that's what this building will provide. If we need more, we can add more. If we don't, I'd like to not see what we have now, buildings that are vacant. That would be expending money, hoping they're going to be used. I say let's build it with the idea that if it's successful, we can expand to accommodate the need, rather than build it and hope the need is filled. To me, that would be prudent.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Drosky?
If we're going to expand, pardon me. If we're going to expand, now is the time to contemplate that, not build and see. If, I mean, we got the design and the contractor and the construction phase going on, I think now would be the time to evaluate that, not to go down the future. If we're building a building now that meets our needs now, I don't think that gives us any room for growth in the future. And that seems to be a little short-sighted, but it's short-sighted because of the dollars that are allocated to this project. So I don't know that I want to take from, you know, Paul to pay Peter on this project because that's just going to cheat, you know, another project, another worthy project that we have here in our city. So I guess what I'm saying is, I'd like the footprint of this building to increase and not exceed our budget. So that may be having our cake and eating it too, but there's probably some very creative construction and design professionals that can take another look at this.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm going to open it to the public. I am going to limit it to just three minutes and not give the extended minute just because of time's sake, because there is going to be another public meeting on this in just a couple of weeks. So if anyone from the public has any comments or questions regarding this?
Weddell Clark Reed, fourteen-thirty Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. I'm here going to comment on the preschool. You know, when we ask for funding up in Tallahassee for the senior center, that preschool plays a very important part because we are the only ones who have that type of a relationship and that type of programming going on. So I would strongly recommend that you look at putting that center, these preschools, back with the active center. It's an important thing. When you have something that's unique, you don't know how that goes when you are asking for funding. It's different, and folks are looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Rita Massey, three-forty-nine Northeast Nineteenth Avenue. I think it's very, very important to keep the children there with the elderly people. And I can't imagine how we would even consider taking away almost half of the amount of the square footage that we have and build a new facility with half of the amount of the facility. Can't we get grants to make it the at least forty thousand square feet instead of the forty-three? I mean, really, it's, the, our population is growing by leaps and bounds. And fortunately, we seniors are living longer, so there is going to be a need for the facility. So let's not be short-sighted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Jane Shafrin, forty-eight Northeast Nineteenth Terrace. I'm very dismayed about what I perceive to be a- what I perceive to be a short-sighted vision and an inadequate plan to serve the current and future needs of our children, our seniors, and our Alzheimer's population. First of all, the center preschool is an integral part of the Focal Point community. It's being removed from its home, from the seniors and the Alzheimer's patients who benefit so greatly from its presence, and vice versa. Research and our own experience support the therapeutic benefits for young and old of intergenerational interaction on a regular, consistent basis. It promotes improved social, psychological, and emotional development, and helps seniors, it helps prevent seniors' feelings of isolation and depression. And kids learn empathy and understanding, and they blossom emotionally and academically with the seniors' encouragement, warmth, and surrogate grandparent-like relationships. It's a win-win situation. And Focal Point's nonprofit name includes the acronym CASA, and the C stands for children. I think the preschool should stay. It's an important part of the center's community. And second, I am extremely troubled by the smaller footprint or square footage proposed for the new center. We all know that the senior and Alzheimer's populations are growing, not shrinking. We're all aging better and longer thanks to modern medicine and healthier living and lifestyles. We're going to need more space, not less, in order to meet the needs of our ever-growing senior population. It is short-sighted to provide smaller space. In the nineteen nineties, my hometown in New York floated a thirty-five million dollar bond to enhance our K through five elementary school. Now, the Long Range Planning Committee there warned there would be a large influx of elementary school-aged children coming into our district. But instead of building more classrooms for a larger student population, a huge multipurpose room was built. Less than ten years later, we had to float another bond for a new wing to add to the middle school for the displaced fifth graders from the elementary school. Now, surely, we need to bring Focal Point into the twenty-first century. It deserves more than a hodgepodge of outdated, rundown buildings. But we need to consider first and foremost the needs and best interests of the population we are serving, the children, the seniors, and those with Alzheimer's. And all of these populations are growing. The new center's tagline is "A Place Where Life Happens." Let's make the center a place where life can happen with room enough for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Public?
I volunteer at the.
Name an address for the record, please.
Elise Miller Plack in nineteen ninety-eight, Northeast Seventh Street. I volunteer at the Focal Point, and the benefits of the children is not just for the Alzheimer's patients, people. It's for all the senior citizens that come there because they all gather together to do the activities. Another thing is that right now, we have an outdoor green area that the people that come there, they sit outside. I don't see any area on the plan that people could get fresh air and be outside as well. Another thing is, besides having, I mentioned this once before, besides having a new building, we need to do something to increase the number of people come from other areas. Because what I see now is that the number of people that come to the center during the day, I'm talking about during the day, not the outside facilities, you know, the Alzheimer's, but the number of people that come on a weekday, like on a Friday when I'm there, there's fifteen people there. And when people pass away right now, we don't have new people coming in. The number is shrinking of the people that use it during the day. So something has to be done to get more people to come, otherwise we're going to have this new building with nobody there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Dan Turner, twelve seventy-eight, Southeast Seventh Court. A balance needs to be struck here, obviously, aside from the fact that most everybody agrees that the children need to remain at that facility and in contact with the other populations there. Mr. City Manager brings up a twelve million dollar cost on twenty-three thousand square feet. That's about five hundred and something dollars per square foot construction costs, or that's all in, Mr. City Manager. If it's construction costs, somebody's making a lot of money out there. I'd like it to be me. I'm in construction. So, with all that said and done, a tighter control, a more modular design, not that that's not a contemporary design, but something that is expandable in of itself. Because I can tell you, if you want to start pouring foundations five years from now, concrete and my people are not going to cost you less. Now's a good time to plan for that growth and try to accommodate it with some reasonableness. Don't wait until we're done and the horse is out of the barn, and let's not, you know, buy forty-three thousand square feet at five hundred and something dollars a square foot if it's not, you know, reasonably anticipated to be necessary.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Glenn Sullivan, two three seven seven, Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Thank you for the presentation. Look forward to the Ovita McKeithen presentation and this Monday. I just wonder, I find it hard to believe that there wasn't some level of growth built into the square footage. And if we don't have that number now, it would be good to have it on Monday because I don't think they would plan based on today. I would assume that there's growth built into the square footage.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Diane Chisholm, three seven five, Northwest Seventh Court, Deerfield Beach. I would just like to put my vote in. I would love to see the children stay on site with the seniors. I had two of my grandsons to attend with Ms. Hayfer over there at the daycare center who does an absolute amazing job. I'm not sure if she's still there. But I think that the kids do benefit, and I think the seniors benefit as well. And the other thing, I would love to see it stay in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close this to the public. Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Yeah, just quickly. So, number one, we just didn't come to this, you know, off the top of our heads. So, part of the reason why looking at the childcare center and moving it is, look at the amenities that you have at the Ovita McKeithen recreational campus. And I'm certainly not arguing if that's the direction the commission wants to move in, we have no issue. But I do think, you know, you need to understand that there's a lot of amenities at the Ovita, just not at the, what will be the new community center, but just the baseball fields, football fields, the basketball court, gymnasium, all of that is located on there. And a lot of the children that actually come through the senior center, and this is actually from Ms. DeFranzo, they don't come just from that childcare center. They actually come from other schools in the surrounding area. Furthermore, even if it were to be moved, these children would still be transported over there and to interact with the seniors. And hopefully, the whole idea when we put together parks and recreation along with the Center for Active Aging, the idea was here was to utilize both those departments and actually have the senior populace that goes to that center. Of course, Alzheimer's may not be able to because of security reasons, but others to be able to go to just not Ovita McKeithen, but even Constitution. So this was not deliberate. The other reason why we all need to be cautious, and we've brought this up at numerous meetings over the past few years, workshops and budget meetings, and that's a fact that we have buildings in this city that are well over fifty to sixty years old. You have an undeveloped park of fifty acres off a military trail just south of Green Road. So our city does have limited bonding capacity, so that's why we looked at this from the vantage point that we could only go out for so much money. Yeah, it does make sense that you want to try to build it all at once, but unfortunately, I don't know that the city has that capacity, financial capacity at this point, at least to do it without significant increases in millage rate or other sources. So, you know, we did not just come to these conclusions easily, but we'll go back and review the center with Ms. DeFranzo, Ms. Petty, and others, and we'll determine, you know, where to fit the childcare center. It seems like that's the direction you want to go, so we will go in that direction and report back to you. And we'll not be Monday night at the workshop. We'll have to do that at a later date. So, with that, I don't have any other administrative comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, Mayor? Yes, go right ahead.
Our resolution, City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving a special event permit submitted by City of Deerfield Beach and Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School for the Special Event Day of Service and Love Beach Cleanup, taking place at seventy-one, Southeast Twenty-first Avenue, one, February fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Commission comments?
Think it's a good idea.
Anyone else? No? Commissioner Parnas?
I'll make a motion.
Well, we got to listen to the public first.
I know. We'll listen to the public.
Thank you. Anyone from the public care to comment on item number eight? Not seeing anybody coming for him. I'll close item number eight. City Manager, you have comments?
Yeah, just quickly, this will not interfere with Pioneer Days whatsoever, and the fifty spaces is not a major financial impact to the city. This is during the week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe. All right, citizens in District One, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What's that? Need a roll call? I'm sorry. Let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Positively, yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes. Just one thing to add on that. On that same day, if it's possible, we all talked about, as a commission, that we would all chip in for a memorial brick to be placed at Sullivan Park in honor of Scott Beagle, who was the geography teacher who was killed at Stoneman Douglas, who was a Deerfield Beach resident. Is it possible to do that at that same time?
Yes, sure.
If we can have that, we certainly don't want to compete with it, but it would be nice to put that in place on that day.
Yep.
Item nine, it's an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach mandating Chapter eighteen, Businesses, Article One in general of the city code by creating Chapter eighteen dash eight, Higher DFB Incentive Program, establishing the Higher DFB Program to encourage the hiring and retention of Deerfield Beach residents by businesses within the city.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Gans. Just quickly, I would like, if it's okay, I know that Vice Mayor Battle sponsored this, but I'd like to have our Economic Development Director give an overview of this for the City Commission and general public.
Sure.
Hello, thank you. Chris Mori, Director of Economic Development. As the City Manager mentioned, this item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Battle. This program is in direct response to past input from the City Commission regarding some of the downfalls of the existing incentive programs that we have in place in the city that we normally participate in. Typically, the City Commission supports applications for qualified targeted industries. Those incentives are a partnership with the state where the city pays twenty percent and the state pays eighty percent of between a three and five thousand dollar per job cash payment, excuse me, cash payment, in exchange for the creation of higher-than-average wages, wage-earning jobs in the city. Those jobs, of course, are not just high wages, but in advanced industries and corporate headquarters. The comment in the past was that there's no assurance that that program creates jobs for residents of the city. And in fact, when we look at our workforce, it's highly likely that those jobs don't go to Deerfield Beach residents. So, we feel the discussion was that there was a need to create something different to incentivize companies to hire locally, to hire Deerfield Beach people. So, you know, we took, we went and we looked at some different best practices from across the country. There are innovative programs everywhere. We looked at programs from Alpharetta, Georgia, and Moreno Valley, California, who are interested and have that same problem. They have a lot of high-tech industries, advanced industries. There's a whole segment of their population that's kind of being missed in that mix. And so, we borrowed from those programs, and we came up with the Higher DFB Program. So, in general, or just to summarize what the program is, it incentivizes employers that create jobs paying at least fourteen dollars an hour, up to five hundred dollars per job. Two fifty would be paid upfront when they created the job. And then if the employee finished their six-month probation, they would receive the second two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar payment. We feel like after that period of time, they become permanent. The employer has invested in them, and that job is more likely to stick and stay. We've set the minimum at five, so that it has to be a real job creation initiative for the employer. We've asked that the jobs be targeted to people from some of our lowest-income, highest-poverty census tracts in the city, and you can see that in your backup. Those census tracts are also, by the way, six of the census tracts that were nominated for the Opportunity Zone. So you can see where our programs are starting to come together. Other salient points, of course, if they can recruit people from those census tracts, they can look elsewhere in the city. We have a mechanism in place to track those jobs to make sure that they stay in place. And one of the other things, you know, in terms of the whole suite of services that the Economic Development Department is developing for job creation and workforce development, is that we would follow these jobs and help these employers access worker training programs so that if somebody's currently unemployed, well, there might be a reason for that. So they participate in this program, get their foot in the door, and then maybe access some training to kind of help them in a career path. The only other thing I would point out is that we're really limiting this to non-retail companies. The thinking there is that non-retail employers tend to have less turnover, one, and they tend to have a career path. If we're going to be giving public dollars to create jobs, our thinking is that we want people to not just be at a dead-end job and not going anywhere. We want this to be something that could lead to something meaningful and have an impact on the community. Thank you.
Commission comments? Vice Mayor Battle?
I certainly want to thank staff for taking our comments to heart about this program. It's a program that I'm very serious about, which is one of the reasons why I am sponsoring this particular ordinance. When I first came on this dais, I noticed companies like, what's my good friend, The Peoples over there, came in to the district, and not one person was hired. And so, the reason why I've been sitting up here screaming all year, especially when you bring me those high-tech programs, noticing then that those people who actually need the jobs are not getting jobs, is one of the reasons why I insisted that we do something like this. I would hope that my fellow commissioners would, having read this ordinance, would agree with my thinking on it. I think it's going to be not only good for the city, but it's going to put us on the map, basically, in a way that we certainly try to develop jobs to, I mean, long-range jobs that we can actually keep in the community. Because the people that we are targeting really are not going to leave Deerfield Beach, and they're going to need jobs. And so, this is one of the reasons why I applaud your efforts, staff efforts, on this and hope that we can get a favorable vote on this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller, and then Commissioner Parnas?
Yes, I don't, I don't think I understood everything about this, but just to enlighten me, Chris, is this only for new companies in Deerfield Beach?
So it could be an existing company.
Could be existing company.
But it must be a new job.
New job, okay. And there was a minimum of five jobs. Do you have to have all five at once to qualify, or can you be one, and you get the second one?
You'd need to create the five jobs within the way that it's proposed. And remember, this is a draft, so.
Okay, that's why I'm.
But the thinking right now is that those jobs need to be created within three years. I'm sorry, within two years, and the company. I'm sorry, within two years, and the company can't apply but once every three years.
So it's like an incentive program for the next couple of years?
Right. We want to see those jobs created, like have the company have a plan to expand, because this is an incentive. You know, we want to make it, set the bar a little bit high.
Or an expanding company to try to hire Deerfield and they get a little perk, $500 to hire Deerfield residents.
Right.
So it could be an existing company.
Yes.
And if we pass, it's gonna be within a next, it's like an experimental thing for a period of time. And you'd hire them, they live in Deerfield, and you said there's some mechanism that if they move out of Deerfield, do you have to give back the $500? I mean, you can't control where a population lives.
We can't control it, you're right.
Okay, but at least it's incentive to maybe look in Deerfield first for employee.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so I could qualify privately? Okay.
Commissioner Parnas?
I support this program. I think it's important that we, as a community, try to employ people who live here and spend their money here and contribute to this community. Even entry-level jobs that are created that would pay in a 40-hour week over $400 a week is certainly better than minimum wage. And it's an incentive to stay on the job and stay in Deerfield and off the street, off unemployment, and off of welfare. So I think it's an investment in Deerfield's future, that we help those who need help now and give them a chance to prove themselves. They stay on the job, they become permanent employees. That's good for Deerfield, and it's good for them. I think it's a win-win situation. I support this program.
Thank you. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Thank you, Ms. Maury.
Gwendolyn Clark, Reed 1430 Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. Have you spoken with the Chamber at all about this program and looking at the businesses that we have in the city? Do you know how many are planning to expand so that, you know, they would meet the qualifications here for this programming?
We'll answer your questions at the end, if that's all right.
Okay, that's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. So the award is, this program is set up to provide a maximum of 100 awards per business at $500 per employee, which one employee could eat up the entire budget if we leave it open to 100 awards per person, per business. Also, it treats this as a first-come-first-serve approach, which can constrict or not allow a lot of businesses or companies to plan, because October 1, I guess that'll be the fiscal year, that's when this program would be available every year. Most business, or a lot of businesses, don't have their plans in place to where they could on October 1 rush into the door and try to get to that limited amount of money. So I think there are some, there are some areas that should be relooked at, not a first-come-first-serve, and we should not allow one employer to eat up the whole budget in a single year. While we do want jobs or employees living in Deerfield Beach, working in Deerfield Beach, we can't afford everyone, and we need to make it fair to as many companies as possible. Lastly, I'd like the Commission to also consider something in the same way. We've got 12 of our 13 highest-paid employees living outside the city, so that's $1.5 million in salaries that are spent elsewhere. So we're comparing, so I'm comparing $14 an hour for 100 employees to $1.5 million in salaries. So the city should really follow this very same example and limit hiring of all white-collar employees to city residents. Or at least the first review of all applicants would be Deerfield Beach residents. And the communication for opening job, for open jobs should be quite a bit better. You'll get a lot more people applying if you use monster.com or whatever instead of GovJobs. There's not a lot of people in white-collar jobs here in the city that probably know what these jobs pay, and if they don't know about it, they're not gonna apply for it. There are a lot of good people in Deerfield Beach that can do the same job.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Richard Hopper, 72 Little Harbor Way, Deerfield Beach. I'm a resident as well as a business owner here in Deerfield Beach. I also sit on the Economic Development Committee for the City of Deerfield Beach. My main comments to you are, the programs that we look at for hiring employees on a regular basis are always challenging to find the people to come in to apply for the position. So we typically go out to all of these job search boards to be able to at least advertise the position. I would encourage you to take a look at, this program is a great benefit to a lot of employers, but also helps us to recruit the local people. However, we don't have a way in which to communicate that from a local level, because I'm putting it on a broad scale, and you ought to find some way that if you're going to put this program in place, to allow us, businesses, to be more aware of this program, which we can do from a lot of different ways, the Chamber, Economic Development Committee, but something that would be on the Deerfield Beach website, as well as some other way to be able to advertise this out to the employers so that they could take advantage of this, because simply just passing the regulation or passing this ordinance doesn't help us to know about it. So I'd encourage you to take a look at that, too.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone, just kidding, Dan.
Dan Hurst, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I'm actually very much in favor of this. It's a good idea and it can only help. But if I'm sitting up here on the commission, I would suggest an amendment to the ordinance. I'm all about accountability for department heads, so I would like you all to add an amendment to this, requiring Ms. Maury or whoever is the economic director to report back to the Commission on the program's progress at least every six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening, my name's Dave Morantz. I'm with the Deerfield Beach Economic Development Council. Our office is at 10 Fairway Drive here in Deerfield Beach, Unit 125. You know, first, just a general statement, you know, we hear so much about Tallahassee taking away local rule. This is a wonderful example of a community doing what's best for its community and not having to be limited by the state. With regard to targeted industries and income levels that are set that may not meet the standards of all the residents here in Deerfield Beach, that mandate comes from the federal government, gets passed down to the state, and gets distributed through county economic development organizations all across the country. And I think the staff should be commended for doing the researches on best practices throughout the country that have worked in communities that are similar to Deerfield Beach. Let me first tell you what this is not. It's not a mandate, nobody has to do it. It's not a regulatory hurdle that anybody has to get over to expand their business. What it is, is a great example of public policy that supports the community sensibilities that should bring out the best in all of us. It's an opportunity, it's an incentive and a challenge for Deerfield Beach to become a remarkable community, and city staff should feel very proud about the work they've done to present this to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening, Michael Hudak, 34 Southeast 9th Avenue. I also am full favor of this program. As a 30-year human resources person and currently the Director of Human Resources for a local company, this is a very good incentive. And I think this is, when this commission meeting started, one of the individuals brought up the word unity, and I think this helps promote unity through our city. There are areas in our city where individuals do need an upper hand, and I think this is an opportunity for those individuals to get some great jobs and some career paths. So I really do commend everybody for putting this together. I think it has a great chance to be successful. But I also recommend that we push it out to the local businesses, making sure that they're aware of this program through the Chamber of Commerce, through the Economic Development Council, because that's the only way it's gonna really succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Hi, Sandra Jackson, 386 Southwest 35th Avenue. The program you guys were speaking about, it may be good, it may not be good, but the first thing we need to do, it's good with the Chamber of Commerce coming up here and speak, we also need to do this within our city, not only with the Chamber of Commerce.
Anyone else? Want to close it to the public?
Ben Preston, 640 Southwest 14 Court, Deerfield Beach. You know, when you look at a program like this, when you look at the positive, I'd just like to see something like this elevated to the next level where it would include our city employees. You have city employees that cannot be, go to the next level simply because we go outside and find other people, and that suggests that there's a weakness on the inside. It would be nice if we had something, some sort of an incentive to encourage our people to do what they need to do so that when positions comes up, come up, we don't have to go looking in Miami or New York or Ohio, that we have right, we could hire right within our own workforce. Would be a good thing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joe Heinz, 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. A little while ago, I heard somebody mention home rule. I found that interesting because, you know, when I looked it up a while back, there was 21 folks that worked for the city that had the jobs that paid over $100,000. And I could find, pretty sure I could find 19 of those that didn't live inside the city, so I think that kind of speaks to home rule right there in a negative fashion. I'd like to see the city do what, maybe what one of the previous managers did, and he required everybody that worked for this city to live in the city. That's the true method of home rule. You don't have to agree with me, but I'm right.
You just have to be factual, that would be nice. Anyone else in the public? Not seeing anyone from the public, we'll close it to the public. Commissioner Drosky?
Look, the rationale for this has to be, at least I hope it is, is that, you know, to help, you know, Deerfield Beach, we have a disproportionate population that lives in poverty in Deerfield Beach. I think that number is around 20%, if I'm not mistaken. That is unacceptable, and whatever measures that we can take to offset that number, I commend my colleague for bringing this program forward. I would like to maybe see some tweaks to it. I would hate to see employers abuse this program to the detriment of the city, which I could possibly see happen. For example, you know, if someone is making $13 an hour now, does reclassifying their pay to $14 an hour constitute, you know, a new job and entitle them protection under this program? You say no, but there's nothing in my backup that isn't, that says that, you know? So I think there maybe needs to be some tweaks to it, but I like the concept behind this going forward. It may need to be altered as we go, but the logic behind it, I think, is spot-on for what we need in Deerfield Beach.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, and I don't know if I saw it in the backup also, but I would think that the employee would have to last at least 90 days before the city would award it, because, I mean, people could be hiring people, letting them go, hiring, you know, we could take advantage of it. So why not go past the 90-day period of the hire? That's when they, you know, that's something I'd like to add to it. And then the city would re-give them the $500 incentive. Because, and you're paying for like one week of their training, effectively. So that's helping with the training costs, with a $14, $15 an hour job. So I like to say we would award it after 90 days of employment, so it's just not a turnover thing.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Battle?
Yeah, I mean, I am in agreement that we need to tweak it and include all those things that we're saying up here, but having said that, then if there's no other discussion...
I would, before I allow you to do the honor, if you don't mind, a couple of comments. I think this is a great idea, and I think Commissioner Drosky's point about making sure this is a new hire is spot-on with that, to make sure everybody gets extra opportunity. We give favored status to local vendors here in the City of Deerfield Beach when they bid on a city job. That makes sense that we try to expand and do that. I think it's a parochial view when you say, well, high-end-paying jobs in the city must live within the city. Clearly, you don't have an understanding how difficult it is in some of these specialized positions to try to fill, to add, to try to handcuff the city and do that. Good luck with it. Talk to any HR director in any city in Broward County, Palm Beach County, or Miami, and they'll educate you on just how difficult it is to do that. And I've never, and I've been coming to a lot more meetings than you have, I've never heard of a city manager that has sat up here and said, "Every single city employee in the City of Deerfield Beach must live in the City of Deerfield Beach." That's not a policy they've ever had. That's not true, because then he had a lot of people out of compliance with his rule that you're making up. So that's not the way it works. I will say this, one of the ways to do this, to advertise it, is put it with a business license. When people come forward and they have a business license, put that information in there, so they are aware of these programs like that when we have incentives like it. That's one way to reach out and target specifically those within the City of Deerfield Beach. And this program is for the City of Deerfield Beach. We have a Deerfield Beach Chamber of Commerce, and they, and the whole point of this is not to expand this beyond the City of Deerfield Beach, it is for the city, and it's for those residents. I applaud you for bringing this forward, it's a really good idea, and it's well thought of, and I think some of the points that people have made. I don't have an issue with it, all the money, or the first-come-first-serve basis. I think it's an interesting argument on whether one company can grab them all. I think that's an interesting argument, but the bottom line is, regardless who hires them, it's a new job with parameters that everyone should be happy with. I can tell you, with some of the incentives we've put out there, not a lot of people take advantage of them. If you look at what we do at the CRA, when we have our program that incentivizes people to redo their. Facade. Not everybody jumps on board, and, you know, it would be interesting to see the success of this program and modify it from there. I wouldn't put such strict parameters on it right out of the, right out of the box. But I do, I do think it's an interesting argument, potentially limit it so one person, one company can't just grab them all. So that is an interesting argument. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, at the MLK Service Day Project, you know, I went there early and missed the program, but the reason why is I had the opportunity, along with Ms. Maury, who came over a little early as well, to meet with Greg Hale, the new president of Broward College. So in addition to this ordinance coming forward, we also have the ability to work with Broward College, and Mr. Hale, or President Hale, is very interested in targeting our residents for specialized training, maybe not necessarily a full four-year degree, but certainly a two-year or even specialized certification for jobs that would go hand-in-hand with what Vice Mayor Battle is bringing forward today. So there's also that. And just for the record, I've worked for Larry Deitch, and there was no such policy. Certainly, we encourage anybody, if they'd like to, they can live in the city, but we're, I think it would be an illegal practice to say that you have to work in the city, and I believe there's even past case law about that. Thank you. And we do use Indeed and other types of media, just not govjobs.com. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Battle?
I can make the motion that we pass ordinance number, what is it? 2019044, Ordinance 2019.
We have a motion, a second, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Good job, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
City Attorney and City Manager comments? Okay. District 1?
No comment.
District, uh, District, I'll do District 3. Vice Mayor, you'll be next to listen.
I'm a little offended by the comments that the city's divided 1, 2, 3, 4. Very rarely have you ever heard me say District 3. We voted on nine issues tonight. They affect the whole city as one. And that's the way I look at the city, as one. Whether you live in 1, 2, 3, or 4, doesn't matter to me. There's a problem, District 1, about a bridge that's broken and needs repair. It's just as much my concern as a senior that needs help in District 3. Or the African-American cemetery, before I became a commissioner. It affects everybody. We have to look at it that way, because we are one city. Yeah, we all live in districts. My people don't say to me, "Well, I'm in District 3." Doesn't matter. There are people that call the mayor when there's a problem, people that call me. I don't care where they live. If there's a problem, I want to help them. So does everybody else up here. That's our job. That's what we get pleasure in doing, is helping people, making decisions that affect all of us, like this one, right now. I represent a district where 75% of my constituents are retired seniors. Yet I'm very concerned with business growth in the city, and employment in this city, and people doing better in this city. And I'm offended by people saying, "Well, we're divided into four groups." No, we're not. We're one city, and everybody's got to realize that. We either rise or fall as one city. I'm for us rising, and growing, and being prosperous, and enjoying life. I don't care where you live, whether it be on the beach, or in a home in District 4, doesn't matter to me. And I don't think it matters to anybody else up here. We're here for the whole city. Our decisions tonight, nine of them, affect the whole city, not one district. Understand that. Whoever sits up here has the responsibility of the entire population of Deerfield Beach. And we take that rather seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drosky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Parnas, I echo your sentiments wholeheartedly. Thank you for stating that. I don't know how I got to be the first, but I would like to welcome Captain Brimlow to his position with Deerfield Beach. We are happy to have you. You're, you're going to fill in well. You have a great history for Deerfield Beach, and I, for one, couldn't be happier that you're taking over. So thank you for, for all that you do. With that, I would like to announce, this Saturday, February 9, is a walking tour of District 4, in particular, the Hillsborough Boulevard and Powerline Road intersection, along with the Deer Run community. Previously, earlier this year, there was a walking tour in District 2, which was a phenomenal success. And what you see from your car versus what you see from a walking tour are two totally different things. And I hope that this walking tour of District 4 will point out some deficiencies that staff can, can correct, or that we can budget for appropriately. This is the time that staff is starting to put their budgets together, so identifying any deficiencies they can start planning for now. And in addition, I would encourage, you know, that we do this regularly throughout the city, not just District 2 and District 4, but District 1 and District 3 as well. I think those should be next in targeted areas, and that we do this on a regular basis going forward. So anyone, this Saturday, February 9, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., it will start at Constitution Park. You're supposed to pre-register. See me afterward, I'll get you the number where you can call to pre-register. It starts at Constitution Park for an orientation, basically what we're supposed to be looking for, and where we're, where we're going to be going. There's four teams, two signed to Deer Run, no, you're not reporting your neighbors for code enforcement violations, that's not what this is about, and two teams on the Powerline Road and Hillsborough Boulevard corridor. And all four teams, so roughly an hour of the walking tour, which will cover about a mile. Bring your walking shoes and jackets, rain or shine, this, this Saturday. So I hope we have a big turnout, and we'll report back what happens for those of you that are unavailable to make it. So thank you.
Thank you. I know that next meeting Sheriff Tony, our new sheriff for Broward County, will be in attendance to do a passing of the baton from our old chief to our new chief. But Chief Brimlow, we're really glad to have you on board. I will say this, and I mentioned this before, about Commissioner Fisher and Mayor Mark Bogan from Broward County, they have both started a mayor's roundtable. Coming from, at least from Commissioner Fisher's standpoint, as he stated, coming from a municipal background, he understands that some of the real pain points that we feel as a city, when it talks about home rule, not with the pressures we get from Tallahassee, but also dealing with the county. We all know that anytime we've dealt with the county, the stories are rarely good. It's usually a, a, a big source of frustration, not just for staff, but for the residents as well. It's a collegial body. I never thought I'd be able to sit and smile and talk to one of our neighboring cities who's suing us, but talk to their mayor about common issues that we share. And it was a good thing, and I think that's going to bear a lot of fruit. And it's going to help us, because one of the things we need to do as cities, while we're all competitive, it's a friendly competition, for the most part, unless they're suing us. But for the most part, it's a friendly competition, and we all cheer for each other, and we need to add for, advocate for each other, not just here with, on the county level, but when it comes to dealing with places like, or organizations like FDOT, or South Florida Water Management District, or anything like that. So I applaud both of them for what they're doing, and it's going to bear a lot of fruit for us. And already, we feel, just out of one meeting each, that a lot of good things are going to come from this. On Saturday, we had the pleasure of having a food giveaway. I want to thank Wayne Barton's Reading, Reading Libraries, I believe is the name of his organization? I'm sorry, Study Center. Thank you. Study Center, Wayne Barton Study Center, BSO for everything they did with that. And I really want to thank the volunteers. We had members of Qantas, both east and west. We had Rotary out there. We had the Women's Club out there, members of the Women's Club, in force, helping out. We also had staff really stepping up and helping fill in some of the gaps. And this, this program, or this event, was not necessarily a city Deerfield Beach event, but where we saw gaps, they were able to jump in. Vicky Plasse Picard, realizing that we had transportation issues. We had a woman, 87 years old, walk all the way from Benai Breth with bags to get the free food giveaway. And then she went to leave and had to have to walk back with all these bags. We get, we all rallied. I drove her, and then we, we, we got some city vehicles that came together and able to do that. George Sullivan, realizing that some of the food that they were giving away, it was a lot that was perishable, and some of it needed to be perished right away. And they stepped up big time. We had city employees like Galen Adderley and others who came out and really did a really good job. And to show that you don't always have to beat each other's throats, it was nice to rub shoulders with Dan Hirsch on a volunteer basis. So all of you who were out there working on it, thank you. It was a really great event. Vice Mayor Battle, Commissioner Drosky, it was, it was phenomenal. So I want to thank all of you for doing that. I also want to thank Tom Good and staff and the city manager for taking some action on some issues we had over in the cove after the bridge discussion and the detours. There are some very specific areas over there that needed some help. We were actually detouring our traffic down roads that are very poorly built, unique situations, but really couldn't handle what we were doing to them. They came up with a very, they were extremely responsive. They came out right away and, and solved a lot of the issues, and I received emails, Tom, I'm sure you're still here, I received emails over the weekend from people that live on those streets that said, "Thank you very much." They already felt the impact in a positive way. So thank you for the quick action on that. That was a, a really good thing. I had mentioned that Peaches Johnson Harper had passed away. Anybody who knew her and her contributions to the city, it's a tremendous loss for the city of Deerfield Beach, and we will miss her. So with that, I believe that is everything. Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, did I jump ahead of you?
Yes, you did.
Vice Mayor, it's your honor to run it out of here.
Yes, just a couple of things. We have coming up the Heritage Banquet. We have Sippin' Stroll that's coming up. We also have Women's History. The nomination forms are out for Women's History. If you know a lady or woman in your district that you would like to nominate, you need to fill out that form and send it in, so that the committee can make the selection for Women's History Month. And on a very, I can't say it's a sad note, it was a sad note for me. At the food giveaway on Saturday, when I arrived, Mayor, you were putting a lady, or trying to find transportation for a lady, because she had had a seizure, and they eventually had to take her to the hospital. Later on that day, they must have, well, they dismissed her. And by the time I got up to her, or saw her again, she had walked from the hospital all the way up to 10th Street, and I told her to get in my car so that I could take her home. And one of the things that I found out is, there's no transportation for our seniors, either at the Palms or wherever they live, on the weekends. So I would like for us, as, as a body, to instruct the city manager to look into that, get with Dr. German, and see what it is that we can do. I called the hospital, and they said they no longer call for TOPS or whatever. And this lady had no money on her, so she did what she could do, and that was walk. And that's just, it's not a good thing. So let's be more humane than that and look into this, this situation. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Sorry for skipping over you. With that, I'm having a meeting adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion? Second? All in favor? Meeting adjourned. And Rita Massey, thank you for being there. Elise Plotkin, thank you for being there as well.